I would like to call our September Board meeting to order. And at this time, if everybody could stand, our state champion tennis team is going to lead us in the pledge. All right. Thank you. All right. Superintendent, if you would like to welcome our principal and our guests this evening.
Yes, it's great to be here at Northern High School for our September Board of Education meeting. It's my honor to introduce the principal of Northern High School, Mrs. Anima Moise.
Hello. Good evening and happy Monday. On behalf of Northern High School, I would like to welcome Superintendent Beam, our Board of Education members, our administrators, staff, and community for coming tonight. Thank you. My name is Anima Moise, and I am the principal here at Northern High School. So I would, oh. Sorry, one second. Yeah, please. So I'm going to kick it off with Northern's mantra, which is Ubuntu. It's an African proverb, which means "I am because we are." And in order to emphasize this, we actually put more words around it. And we added "we are one," "we are northern," and this is the spirit that we're trying to instill amongst our students and how they treat themselves as well as each other. Sorry, we'll just have to wait a second. I'm going to kick it off with some points of pride. So our school opened in 1972. It is actually our 50th year, so we're super excited about that. Here we go. Perfect. We have about 100 staff members, 1,145 students, of which 67% of them are actually athletes. In terms of academics, our graduation rate is 95%. If you look at our SAT scores and proficiency for math and reading, we score above the national average and the state average. And this was the most exciting thing that happened just a couple of weeks ago. We found out that nine of our Huskies are actually National Merit Scholarship semifinalists. So we're going to be announcing that soon. This was really exciting for us. Yep. Perfect. Our instructional focus today, I'm going to be talking about all the different programs that we offer here. This is, for me, what makes Northern so unique. We have so many different pathways for our students to be successful. So we'll start with Chinese immersion. So this is a program that we have a partnership with Western Michigan University. It is kindergarten through 12th grade. It's open to any of our students in the district, but we ask them to attend a Northern school. It's actually taught by professors from Western Michigan University at the high school level, which is really exciting. We also house our cognitively impaired program for the district here at Northern. Within this program, we have something called peer-to-peer. And that is when we have our general education students pair up with our CI kids in order to build relationships and do some activities together. If you're ever able to watch them, it's a lot of fun. And then at the end, the growth that our CI students have, as well as our Huskies who are Gen Ed kids, it's remarkable. Flex, also housed here at Northern, is our alternative education program for our Huskies. Gone boarding, we have a couple of options for this program. So one, it's a two-hour block just meant for our Northern students. The second is a three-hour-long, year-long block that is open to any of our high schoolers in the district. That program also covers not only core content areas, but it also allows for students to participate in boarding activities such as surfing, I don't do any of these things, so surfing, snowboarding, wakeboarding, and they actually build things as well, which is really fun for them. Project Next is unique to Northern, for Northern students. So once you enter into this project-based learning program, you stay from ninth through 12th grade. And in fact, last year, we had our first graduating class. Spanish immersion, again kindergarten through 12th grade, open to any of our students in the district, but you do have to attend a Northern school. And STEM, so this is a curriculum that is focused on science, technology, engineering, and math, and has been around for a little while now. And then TASS is traditional educational success. So this encompasses all the other classes that we have, including AP. And now you're going to view a video of some of our Huskies sharing the impact that these programs have had on them. Just FYI, it was Spirit Week when we did the filming, specifically USA Day, which you'll see why I'm telling you that now. Please enjoy.
Hi, my name is Ava Hamilton. I am a senior in the Chinese immersion program. I absolutely love the Chinese immersion program. The past 13 years that I've been enrolled in the program have given me such amazing opportunities. I've learned everything from Chinese history and Chinese art to Chinese business and Chinese geography. I've truly become fluent in not only the Chinese language, but also Chinese culture. Throughout the whole process, I've also made some amazing lifelong friends. I had the opportunity to travel to China. I've done projects with students in China, as well as compete nationally for the program. Lastly, I'm really excited to be able to graduate with 28 college credits from Western Michigan, as well as a seal of bilinguism. I think all of the learning and all of the opportunities given to me will really help me in my future career and college education.
I'm Avery, and I am a senior. After being a part of Husky pals in middle school, I knew that peer-to-peer was a program that I needed to be a part of in high school. Since sophomore year, I started my mornings reading, doing yoga, and hanging out with the students in the CI room. This program has made such a big impact on my life by giving me new friendships, new perspectives, and made me realize that being a special education teacher is what I want to do with my life.
Hi, my name is Lauren Roloff, and I'm a senior here at Forest Hills Northern. This program is unlike any other I have ever been a part of. It is so fun to learn more about my classmates as we encourage each other to try new things in and outside of the classroom. I'm also so thankful already for the encouragement and support from my teachers, who challenge me to think creatively and expand my learning. There is nothing like being encouraged and cheered on by a teacher in a boat as you try wake surfing for the first time, or seeing a friend learning something that they might never have otherwise tried. Being physically active in school, having the opportunity to see the passion of teachers who love learning and engage in students in what they love, and pushing myself outside of my own comfort zone in so many ways, has already made this school year, for me, the best ever. I'm so thankful that Forest Hills Northern offers this program. I'm serious about my academic learning, and I love that this program incorporates that with lifelong skills, as well as fun and challenging physical activities. I'm hoping to go into nursing in the future, but I was very excited about the opportunity of business and marketing, because there's something I have little experience in but really wanted to know more about. This program truly has it all.
I'm Sean Singh. I'm a junior. I went to the Flex Academy freshman year. I was, no, sophomore year, I was really behind freshman year. I was down low. And I caught up, I'm all caught up now thanks to Flex. It really helped me. It did wonderful jobs. It's really worth your time if you're really down low.
Hi, my name's Taylor Murphy, and I'm a senior, and I've been in Project Next all careers of high school. Project Next has made me have better connections with my teachers because of the time we spend with them. I still have better connections with the people I work with, because I wouldn't work with them in any other setting. I've learned to collaborate in small and large groups, and I've also learned to collaborate with real-world professionals. I've collaborated with a marketing research firm sophomore year, and I was lead on the project. I feel confident that the skills I've learned in Project Next will take me far into college in my career after. Project Next has helped my confidence grow as I plan for college and my future career in education. I have the opportunity to have an internship this year, and I really look forward to that and the mock interviews that we will hold with Grand Rapids professionals later this month. These opportunities will help me not only in college, but my future career as well. As a student who didn't live in Forest Hills until ninth grade, I truly believe that Project Next has given me a deeper connection to Northern.
Hey, my name is Daniel Pasqual. I'm a senior, and I'll be talking about the Spanish immersion program. Spanish is kind of personal for me. My mom grew up in Spain, so Spanish has just been like weave in through my family. So Spanish immersion program has been awesome. I've been going through it since kindergarten. I've made a lot of great friends. I've made a lot of great connections. There have been a lot of great opportunities for me, and there continue to be even more. I'm going to go to Cornerstone University, and through everything that I've been able to do, before I even set foot on campus, I'll have a minor in Spanish, as well as a seal of bilinguism. So it's just been awesome. The great opportunities that the Spanish immersion program has offered are awesome. I've been able to visit Spain, and my friends have said that was an amazing opportunity. They made connections with native Spanish speakers, and so being part of this Spanish-speaking world has been incredible.
Hi, my name is Emily Anderson, and I am a senior in the STEM program. I really love the STEM program. It has deeply impacted my life. Not only has it deepened my understanding of the design process and integrating math and sciences through projects, but more importantly, it has enhanced my soft skills, so communication, presentation, and collaboration. This has impacted my life because I think I might want to go into mechanical engineering, where I will use these skills every day, combining different kinds of subjects and working with different kinds of people to achieve a specific goal.
Hi, my name's Caitlin McClay, and I'm a senior, and I represent the traditional education system. I believe it is one of the best things Northern has to offer, especially because by doing quizzes, tests, and assignments, and having lectures with your teachers, it really prepares you for college. As well as this, having your teachers, they're the foremost thing at Northern. They're one of the best parts about the traditional education system, because you build such a close bond with your class and your teachers. On every syllabus, they have their personal phone number, their email, because they really care about us, and they prepare us for college by doing all this for us. AP classes, which have helped me improve my GPA and have put me on track to go to better colleges, are done through mainly the traditional education system, and these teachers really care about moving us forward and advancing us. As well as this, being able to collaborate with your peers and use the facilities here at Northern really benefits people who are going into majors like sociology, psychology, law, and criminal justice, because you communicate with your peers, and that's something that I'm looking forward to doing with the help that I've earned at Northern.
So I would like to end with our mantra, which is Ubuntu. "I am because we are." "We are one." "We are northern." Thank you for coming this evening. So I could watch that video all night long. Thank you.
All right. Well, we have a few presentations tonight that we'd like to bring forward to honor some amazing achievements in the area of educational athletics. And to kick it off, I'd like to call for the athletic director for Northern High School, Mr. Corey Anderson, and he will kick things off tonight. Mr. Anderson.
I'm very excited. Our girls' tennis team had an amazing year last year to cap off, quite frankly, a long run of state championships, only interrupted by COVID. And it's my honor to introduce Coach Dave Sukup. Coach Dave Sukup, this was his 16th state championship as the head coach at Northern. You know, Dave has served our community here at Northern for a long, long time, and hasn't been just in tennis and boys' and girls' tennis. He was also a football coach here. He was a swim coach here. He has really served the students of Northern for a long time and achieved ultimate success at everything he's done. For that, I'd like to thank him. Before I turn it over to him, I'd like to congratulate Ian Hearn and the Forest Hills Eastern baseball team on their state championship. They're going to be recognized tonight as well. Congratulations, guys, and Coach Hearn and your coaching staff. With that being said, Coach Dave Sukup, if you could come up, please. Our girls' tennis team, if you could walk over to that edge and walk across the stage. Coach Sukup is going to introduce you, and you will be presented with a certificate from the board.
I just wanted to say a few things about this girls' tennis team. They're three-peat. They're all academic, all-state conference champs. They've been, they're headed to, 54 conference champs we've had over the years. They're regional champs, we've had 41 of those, and state champs, like I said, these girls do an outstanding job. I don't know whether, how come you're so far away? Okay. All right. This is Natalie, one of our captains this year. She's going to talk, and then I'm going to say a few words about each player.
Okay, first up, we have Maya Ectonall. She's not here.
Maya's in college. Anyway, she was a finalist, a finalist, and a two-year starter for us.
Ava Hamilton.
You just saw Ava on that screen a few minutes ago, but Ava was a finalist and is one of our captains. I think Maria, she was, what? She's undefeated at fifth doubles, five-doubles champ conference, and she did a great job for us.
Hannah Johnson.
Hannah is not here. I believe she's in Florida.
Myself, Natalie Lan.
Natalie, which is right next to me, she's done, she was state champ, captain the year before that. She was state finalist. She's an outstanding person and player.
Rhea Marwaha.
Rhea is one of our one-doubles team, that one-state, and she is education, her education is at the University of Wisconsin.
Morgan McKenzie.
Morgan is another one of our fifth-doubles players. She was fifth-doubles conference champ and undefeated season. Morgan, nice job.
Paige McKenzie.
Paige played two doubles, nope, Paige, three doubles, four doubles. Yeah, I get it. That's why I got Natalie. Anyways, she was a state finalist. The match went three sets. They almost won. Paige did a great job. She's a big serve, and we're looking forward to the future.
Ryan Maury.
Ryan was a state champ. I think, I believe she had an undefeated season at two doubles. She's going to be in one of our captains coming up next year. Ryan, you did a great job. Miriam was a state finalist. She beat the, she beat the number-one seed in the state tournament, which some of you don't quite understand, but that's a huge accomplishment. She's a captain also and plays really hard. Miriam.
Isabella Paul.
Isabella is at Michigan State, and she was a state champ, and she was Ryan's partner.
Ella Renucci.
Ella was one of our late doubles people that also was undefeated.
Sophie Richards.
Sophie is another one of our one-single-doubles players from this past year, state champ and all-state, and I believe she's at the University of Michigan.
Tanishka Shinoi.
She played with Maya in third doubles, and they're state finalists, two-year starter, and she's at Michigan State.
Abigail Saminsky.
Abby is a state finalist, all-state, one of the best players we've ever had, and she is at Xavier University.
And finally, Andrea Wong.
Andrea is the real lao ren in practice. This should go. Andrea's state finalist, one loss all year. That was in the state finals. Works very hard. Andrea, congratulations. That just about does it. Our coaches, and I'm not sure if who's here. Joe, Joe Rivera is one of our coaches, been with us about 10 years. Don, with, you know, Don's over there. He's been about 10 years. And Amber Slater, is Amber here? No. Nope. Amber Slater is one of the coaches. Again, thank you. Thank you, Board of Education, for everything you do. I think it's a wonderful school system. Of course, I've been here since '73, but it's a great place, and thank you.
16 state titles is truly amazing, and then when you add on top of that all of the academic all-state honors as well. These are ladies that get the job done both in the classroom and on the court, and we couldn't be more proud of all of you. So congratulations, coaches and ladies and your families as well. Now I'd like to call to the podium the athletic director for Eastern High School, Mr. Ben Sherman, who's going to introduce our other state championship team that we are celebrating tonight. Ben.
Thank you, Superintendent Beam. I'll turn this again a little bit, sorry. If we could get our baseball players that are here to come up to the stage and coaches. While they're making their way up, this baseball team had a tremendous year from start to finish, having the most wins in school history, winning a conference championship on their way to the MHSA Division II State Championship against Grand Rapids Christians. So amazing year, phenomenal student athletes as well, and just a joy to watch them every single day. Their team motto was "team," and they truly exemplified that throughout the year, and it was just a fun team to watch throughout it all. And congratulations to Northern's girls' tennis team as well. First, I will go through our student athletes. Walker Rocky, James Dempsey, Mac Dembraber, Ashton Finstra, Max Ferck, Colin Fridsma, Leo Hearn, Caleb Kuiper, Owen Mast, Brian Messing, Jacob Pallow, Evan Parks, Carson Patton, Drew Patton, Sean Schultz, Shorty Satalo, Ethan Smith, Matt Stotts, and Brendan Thompson. Our head coach for the Hawks baseball team is Ian Hearn, and Coach Hearn, on the way to that state championship this year, gathered his 600th career victory this season. So that is a phenomenal milestone that he has hit, and we're very excited that he was able to do that with our Hawks. Assistant coaches, Cam Waisaki, Jim Haslett, Lance Bohm, Andy Evans, Don Patton, Brett Palana, Taylor Palana, and Bryce Wilker. Coach, do you want to say anything? I'll turn it over briefly to Coach Hearn.
First of all, I'd like to thank the school board for making Forest Hills the best place, the best schools, without question. Also, Mr. Beam, and as well as all administrators. This year was an absolutely amazing year. It was probably my most enjoyable year as a coach. I had the opportunity to coach my son in the process, so that made it even better yet. But it is an absolute honor to have the opportunity to coach these outstanding young men. And as Coach Sherman mentioned, they accomplished a lot of things throughout the course of the season. And during the state championship run, we had amazing community involvement as well. And it just seemed like we had the biggest crowd at Michigan State University in the state championship game, and it definitely, definitely played a factor. But I will say that our motto this year was "team," and part of being a team was being a servant for each other. And I really believe that with that philosophy, they were able to accomplish a lot and celebrate each other's successes. With that all being said, like I said, I'm extremely grateful, and it was an absolutely fabulous year. I'd like to congratulate Northern Tennis for their 16 state titles. That is just absolutely amazing. It's like, I can't think of any other program that's done anything like that. So congratulations, ladies. Congratulations, Coach, and also congratulations, Forest Hills Northern. Thank you very much. Go Hawks.
Coach Hearn and Hawks, thank you for being here tonight. Coach, thank you for instilling all of the values that you do into your team and players, and congratulations again for the achievement you've brought to the entire Forest Hills community. And I would just point out, we have two other state championship teams that we want to celebrate. They're both from Forest Hills Central. Forest Hills Central has their senior retreat that's going on right now, so rather than double booking them, we will see them here in October. So congratulations to all of our student athletes. Thank you for making us all proud. Those are our presentations tonight.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Superintendent Beam. Now we will move on to the, maybe not as celebratory, but important work this evening, and I am looking for a motion to approve our consent grouping. Could I have a motion to approve?
I move we approve the consent grouping group, items 6A through D.
And a second?
A second.
Okay. Superintendent, do you have any items you'd like to draw out?
I would just point out a couple of things tonight. In the consent grouping, members of the Board of Education are appointing a representative of the Board for the Michigan Association of School Boards Delegate Assembly. That will take place here later this fall, and that's really to look at the bylaws and operating rules for that statewide association of school board members all across the state. I know Dr. Fauston's going to talk a little bit about the board policies that we are recommending for approval at this point in time. This is a typical time of the year where we see a larger number of policies that our policy provider has amassed throughout the last school year, the previous school year, to bring forward updates and recommended tweaks, sometimes changes. They reflect changes in law, or case law, or rule that we'll see, or as well as just a client of the policy provider pointing out where a policy could be more clear in some cases. And I know Dr. Fauston's going to say probably a little bit more about that as well with the board's involvement with that, and I appreciate that very much. And then also, just the last item to point out is the employment of new professional staff members, and we are very pleased to have them in our ranks. That's all I wanted to point out in the consent grouping tonight.
Excellent. All right. Well, I know Dr. Fauston would like to bring something up. Any other board members, or should we just go right to there? Okay. All right, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to pull out item 6A, three board policies. There were several updates that were sent to us by the district's law. There were several updates that were sent to us by the district's law firm, Thrun Law. As our policy provider, they keep track of what's going on in education, and as Dan said, keep us abreast of what's going on, on policy updates and changes. So just to make sure that we're understanding what they're recommending. Mary, Val, Christine, Anice, and I got together about a week or so ago, and we went through all of the proposed policy changes. Everything that they were recommending was fairly routine and just minor updates to policy language. There was one temporary policy that was deleted, and one new policy that was being recommended, which was policy 4227 for false Medicaid claims. It was really good actually to be able to get together and go through all of these updates. And I know we're planning on anytime that Thrun comes to us with proposed changes, to rotate different board members through so that we have hopefully one from finance and one from curriculum, so that we can get together and all have a chance to participate in that review process.
Excellent. Wonderful. Thank you. All right. At this point, we should probably go into our reports from finance. I'm looking over, I don't see Nicole, so I'm assuming that you're doing finance, I guess.
And I'm back. I'm doing finance report, yes. Excuse me. So a little bit of a long report this time. We had a great report from Scott Hade on curriculum, which I'm sure the Curriculum Committee will be reporting on. We had a bond construction update. In November 2018, voters approved a $130 million bond to invest in infrastructure, secure our schools, and inspire students. We've completed or are nearing completion on a lot of these projects, which include roofing, six schools, adding in snowmelt, replacing water heaters and boilers, paving, lacquer replacements, athletic facilities, replacing old buses, classroom transformations to create collaborative learning spaces, upgrading technology, lots and lots and lots of stuff. If you would like to see some of what these bonds have been used for, you can actually go to FHPSbondupdates.com. And the presentation that is there is also available on the bond page of our website. We also got an update on the solar panel project. It is moving along, and there are likely to be some small sections of roofs that need some fixing before the solar panels are able to be installed. But we're hoping to have this project ready for installation next summer, and it will include an educational component as well. For our action items, we are recommending approval of the purchase of the Digital License for the Teachers Curriculum Institute for an amount not to exceed $78,345 from the general fund. We looked at renewing our Zoom communications for an amount not to exceed $26,743. Now, this amount was down from a little over $30,000 last year because we don't have as high of a demand as we for the, we used to, but we still use it for meetings between teachers, for parent-teacher meetings, when in-person meetings can be sometimes difficult to schedule. We use it for students to meet virtually with college recruiters, for instance, things like that. So that will come from SRT equalization funds. We are also recommending approval of an amount not to exceed $838,000 from the general fund for a three-year contract for snow removal using Ketterberg Verhaegh. There is also an amount not to exceed $138,000 for cafeteria furniture at Collins and Orchard View from the 2019 and 2021 capital projects, getting that through Custer Workplace Interiors, and we are using the E&amp;I and TIPS purchasing cooperatives. And lastly, approval for the purchase of a new passenger van from Gornow Ford, which is used for smaller sports teams, like the golf team perhaps, other smaller things also with students from the Transition Center. This would be for an amount not to exceed $56,292 from the general fund, and we are utilizing the Michigan Deal Purchasing Cooperative. And very, very last thing is that there was also a refund on property taxes in the amount of $56,044 to Kent County and $2,232 to Grand Rapids Charter Township.
Excellent. I can't imagine there'd be questions. Are there any questions for Dr. Fauston? All right. That was great. Wonderful. All right, well, let's move over to curriculum.
Yes. So we had a great presentation and an overview on the new teacher/staff training, not just teachers, but social workers, counselors, all new staff, that happened in August, right before school started. Some of our instructional coaches did that presentation for us along with Kim Vanian Twerp. And something that is notable is that this year they changed that training from two days to five days. It's just, they felt like it was too much information to try and cram into two days, didn't really do it justice, and so they heard some feedback from teachers and other staff members that it would be more appropriate and more useful to expand that training program. So during that training, they have workshops and presentations on their content area. They hear from HR, they get their assigned mentors and meet with them. They do a cultural intelligence training, which I also got to take part in during that new teacher training this year, and, or I should say, new staff training this year. And it was so fun to sit with new hires to the district, or recent hires to the district, and go through that with them. They also got to take a bus tour of the entire district, just knowing that so many times we have staff members that kind of hunker down in the school that they're hired in, and they don't necessarily leave that for many years sometimes. And so it was good for them to see how large of a district we really are and how much land we cover. So they are going to continue that for next year and beyond, five-day training instead of two. And then anyone that's hired after that training takes place has the option to attend their pertinent training sessions the following year. So that was a great presentation. We talked about a 30-day review of the book Salt to the Sea by Rita Sapetis to be used at Eastern for English IX classes and honors English IX classes. And then lastly, and this is, I think, what you were referring to, Dr. Fauston, we heard a presentation from Mr. Hade, just some recent data points in regards to academic proficiency and growth in the district. And these are all available to the public. If you go to the Forest Hills website and you click on the Academics tab, and then the Assessments tab, you can get a link to the My Michigan School Data website, which has all of this information and more about Forest Hills and any of our neighboring districts or districts around the state. So just really highlighting that the district consistently is ranking in the top 2% in math, the top 3% in ELA in overall proficiency among public schools statewide. They saw an, Forest Hills saw an increase in our M-step scores amongst our neighboring districts, so in Kent County, in many of our K8 grade levels who take the M-step in the spring, so third, sixth, seventh, eighth grade, for example. Also, some of those same grade levels for math had increases, and then we compare our district with like districts statewide, and we continue to outrank those districts as well in many of our K8 classrooms. Just to note, there is no 1920 school year data, since that was COVID year when the state was still shut down. So there is not data on that for any schools, if you look at that website. And then I also, I think it is worth noting that we continue to see an increase in our AP class enrollment. It's grown each year since 2012, 2013. We offer 26 in-person AP classes in the district, and we see about 80% of our students who take those classes score high enough on the AP exam to earn college credit. And I also think it's worth noting, and we've talked about this before, that we have maintained an average four-year graduation rate above 96% for the last four years, with an average of 83% of our kids enrolled in college within six months of graduation. So again, like I said, I think this is really encouraging data, and it's a testament to the hard work of our teachers and our parents as well. Over the last few years, when so many other districts have some faltering assessment data, ours continues to climb, and I think that's a great thing, and we're celebrating.
How could we have something better than Dr. Fauston's report? Well, I guess there you go. All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions for Maggie this evening? Okay. Well, with that, I think we will move to a roll call vote. I will turn it over to you, Mrs. Cavell.
Thank you, Madam President. All right. Mr. Mashad.
Yes.
Dr. Fauston.
Yes.
Mrs. Tryon.
Yes.
Ms. Cavell, yes. And Mrs. Callahan.
Yes. All right. Well, at that, this time, I think I will turn it back over to you Superintendent Beam.
Yes, just one informational item tonight. I've approved resignations consistent with the master bargaining agreements and, excuse me, Board of Education policy. I'll just move right on to my superintendent's report, absolutely. Thank you, Amina and Northern team, for hosting us here tonight. 50 years here for the Huskies, quite a celebration when we think of all of the thousands of students and families that have called Northern home for those 50 years, and the amazing things that those graduates are out doing in our world. It truly is incredible. And we have people, like we saw with our coach tonight, Coach Sukup, who go all the way back to the opening years, just incredible dedication and service from so many people here, helping our students achieve great things out in the world. So congratulations. Thank you for hosting us here tonight, and 50 years is quite the achievement. We'll have more celebration that will take place as we move throughout this year. I would just like to say a few words about the opening of the school year. I've been in all 18 of our schools several times now, spent some time in all those schools, talking with staff members and talking with students, and I'm very happy to see lots and lots of smiles from many people. I've asked staff members many times, so how's the new school year? And oftentimes, what I hear back is in a little bit of hushed tones, and what they say is, "It's going really well." And I say, "Why are we whispering?" And they're like, "Well, because we're not used to it going the way it's going right now. The last few years have been really hard, and this is really good and a great thing to celebrate." It sort of feels like, you know, our baseball team is off probably preparing for another championship, but it's sort of like talking about a no-hitter in the early innings. People don't want to do that. But so far, so good with all of our staff that have put in really just a ton of work to create the conditions for our students to have a wonderful start of the school year. We want to continue building on that as we go forward, but just a lot of gratitude to all the people who've worked in department after department, school after school, to be ready this school year for our families. Mrs. Tryon, talk a little bit about our M-step scores. We certainly are proud of the achievement that students have demonstrated in all the work of our families and teachers and students themselves in this area. Since changing the statewide test from the MEEP test to the much more challenging M-step exam in 2015, we've been looking to get back to exceed the scores we saw before the pandemic. And indeed, we were able to do that in the area of reading this past spring, and so that is a testament again to all the hard work that's gone in to that content area. And in math, we had several grade levels that are doing that, but as we've talked about before, we're using those additional pandemic relief dollars to really bolster math and math achievement all across the district. That is a big focus area for us this year. I've already seen it in my own kits, as my daughter brought home tonight. "Dad, look at what I can do in math already." She was very excited about that. We are grateful for the additional tools that we have out there for families and for students to accelerate their own learning, to support our teachers in that area, and the additional staff that we have that are helping in this area as well. An item I'd like to just point out again, I talked about it at the August meeting, and that is the request that's on the November ballot for the community to consider the renewal and restoration of the Recreation Millage. We first adopted this millage 20 years ago. It's a one-mill question, and what this millage allows us to do is to provide educational services to the whole community that goes beyond what we see in the K-12 formal classroom space. But this is really for students and adults and senior citizens and preschool-aged children for additional enrichment and education. Many have probably seen the magazine that comes to our mailboxes that talks about all of the enrichment activities that are available for adults and for young people that extend beyond the school day. The Recreation Millage helps to support those programs, as well as support a vibrant senior citizens programming and center that we have. And this question is up for renewal. We're not looking to make it a 20-year question anymore, but to make it a 10-year question so it can come back to the voters more often. With 10 years, hopefully people will keep in mind what this question is for and what it's helping to support, and that's learning at all ages throughout our community. Just a word about staffing. We hear more and more around the country challenges that schools are seeing with staffing, and we see this in many areas of our economy as people are looking to fill open positions. We're grateful that we have our teaching positions filled. We're grateful for all the work that has gone into staffing our transportation area. There still are areas where we could use additional staff members. Classroom assistants, classroom paraprofessionals, we need more people in that area. We can always use substitutes in all of these categories. So not only for teachers, but bus drivers, food service workers, life happens with everyone. You can have a building secretary whose parent needs medical attention and they're a state away, and they need to be gone for a few days. So it's great to have additional hands that can step in and help out in many different ways in all sorts of job categories. I have talked to superintendents around the area and around the state, and we are fortunate here in Forest Hills that we've been able to attract staff members and attract quality staff members to the openings that we have. But it is getting more challenging in that area. We know of neighboring districts here that still have nearly 100 vacant teaching positions. So we are trying some different programs as a county to help young people who may have an interest in education pursue that interest a little bit more and find out a little bit more about that pathway, because we know we need great teachers to help supply students that go into all areas of the workforce going forward. So, so far, so good, but it is becoming a more challenging thing for us, as we've seen over the last couple of years, and certainly for some neighboring districts, it's really at a crisis situation. The last thing I just want to speak about tonight is our ongoing work to develop a new strategic plan. We are coming together with parents and community members and staff members and board members, coming together to look at where we aspire to be in the next three to five years. And I'm seeing lots of consensus around deep learning for all of our students, making sure that they are equipped with all of the knowledge and skills and experiences to be successful adults in whatever endeavor they may choose, to make sure that we have a dynamic and flexible system as well, is something that I'm hearing a lot about, that it's not a one-size-fits-all. If there are students that, I've talked about math, who are way accelerated in math, that we're able to support them wherever they are in their learning and able to do that effortlessly. And then also, as we talk about the experiences that our young people are looking for to help them understand what it is that happens in the adult world, because one of the things that we want to make sure our students are equipped to do is to continue learning beyond high school, whatever form that may take. And we know that students can be far more engaged when they have a sense of where some of their interests might be in a general pathway or a general area. So we're looking to partner with our community, partner with our parents, to kind of lift the veil a little bit more on what it is adults do for a living throughout a vibrant economy that we have here in West Michigan, and have more and more people come into our schools and share that understanding with our young people, and also have our students go out to workplaces all throughout our community and throughout our economy to understand all the dynamic things that are happening, and to also understand the relevancy of the skills and the knowledge bases that they are cultivating in the classroom each day. So those are things that we're zeroing in on in the strategic plan, and we are looking to draft that, we're calling their winning aspiration, but really that desired state that we see for us in the future, and then also to share that out with all of our stakeholders to get their feedback on that as well. So exciting work that will take us throughout the fall, October, November, and December, but will continue but we'll continue to provide updates and engage our community as we move through these next steps. That's my report tonight.
Excellent.
Very exciting work. So it feels like back to school. All right, with that, I will open it up to see if there's any board communication.
I do have some from the foundation. This is a little bit of a lengthier report from the foundation, only because it's just kicking off a new year. They've had a really exciting August, and they have a really exciting October, November coming up. So Elizabeth just wanted to make sure that everyone had all of the information that they needed, and even for community members who are here too, there's an ask in here for a spot in a minute. So just to remind everyone, she wanted to make sure that everyone knew that the goal of the foundation, raising funds to support the educational needs in all seventeen of our schools, plus the Transition Center, the Fine Arts Center, and the Community Services Aquatic Center. Also wanted to remind us that last year, they gave out over $300,000 to all of the schools. Not each school, but collectively, to, in the form of grants and scholarships. All three attendance areas are represented by the foundation. They also want to serve as a bridge to alumni in Forest Hills, and they also want to work in collaboration with all of the PTOs at all of our schools. And they started that with a great event last spring where they brought all the PTOs together to help them identify needs and work with principals, teachers, staff, and students in their buildings. So in August, they had their second annual back-to-school scavenger hunt in downtown Ada, and this was a way for families to come together and collaborate with PTOs and downtown businesses and start the school year. They had over a thousand Forest Hills students and families descend on downtown Ada that day. It ended up being one of the biggest community back-to-school events in all of West Michigan. They more than doubled student attendance and family attendance from last year. So that was a really, really cool event. I think if you talk to anyone that went to it, they have nothing but positive things to say. I think it was really hot that day. I was not able to make it, and so kudos to our students who wore the mascot costumes too for hours. So they did just close their fall grant cycle on Friday, and they have forty-eight requests for fall grants, and the Grants Committee is going to begin meeting to discuss and award those grants. Hopefully, by October 12th is their goal, that those teachers should know if they've gotten a fall grant. And then there'll be the spring grant cycle as well, and that will start happening sometime in the winter. And then the board is, or the Foundation Board is asking, they need a representative from one of the, from the eastern attendance areas. They really like to have a balance of foundation members being from central, northern, and eastern, and they are currently looking for an additional person representing eastern. So if someone is interested, there's an application process, and that is on the fhp sf.org website, and it tells you how to do that, what the process is like. So it's under the About section, and then Board of Trustees for the Foundation Board. And then lastly, their biggest event of the year is the gala. That is coming up on November 10th. It's at Frederick Meyer Gardens. That is where they raise really a major chunk of money for all of those grants that they give out to the schools. It's a beautiful night of celebrating the district's collaborative teacher team of the year usually, and then other highlights of the district. And they're doing all of that this year, all the registration online. So if you are interested in sponsoring or attending, again, you're going to visit fhp sf.org, or you could also call the Foundation Office to get more information from Elizabeth or Ingrid. So that is the Foundation report.
Excellent. Yes, it was hot that day, and yes, Bruiser did look a little tippy there at one point, that's for sure. Thank you. Wonderful report, lots of great news tonight. All right, is there any other board communication? Oh, yes, there is.
I have one also. I'm excited to report that I am a member of a community council that is, was set up by Tamasha James to provide input, feedback, and suggestions on the DEI efforts in the district. Tamasha is launching four different committees to ensure voices are heard from many different perspectives. One is the committee of community members, that's the one that I am part of. There's one for teachers, one for leadership, and those three have already met. And then there will be a fourth committee that is made up of students, and that one is still being formed. These groups are convening to provide feedback on the DEI efforts, which are built to ensure that each child in our district is given what they need to succeed or has barriers removed to facilitate that. We've just started meeting, so I don't have a lot to report, but I'm looking forward to seeing how these efforts progress. And if anyone ever has any questions, Tamasha is always very willing and eager to talk and share about anything about these teams and the initiative she's working on. And so as things progress, I will have more to share.
Excellent.
Madam President, could I have a pass back? I forgot one item in my report. Is that all right?
Yes, go ahead.
Today, we had our first monthly meeting of the year with the Parent Advisory Council. In a wonderful meeting, we have parent representatives from all eighteen of our schools that come together, and multiple representatives from schools, and we get to hear from our parents, and we also shared quite a bit of information about the budget and where we ended up with that since last we met in May. We talked about our renovation projects and construction. We had our Director of Transportation there to talk about all things related to transportation. We talked a little bit about our strategic plan, I'm remembering all the items, and then items that parents brought up as well, but a great collaborative piece that we have there with parents who represent all of our schools. So we look forward to those monthly meetings, and it was great to kick that off today.
Excellent. All right, any other board communication? Yeah, that reminded me of something. I was going to thank Julie and the extended team for putting together the security event. The weeks are mushing together. That wasn't, that was last Monday, the security event that we had. That was great to have our security consultant and conduct that at the Fine Arts Center. So that was great information for the people that attended to ask questions about security and all its different forms in the district. So that was, thank you, Julie and team for putting that together. Any other board communication? We have a lot tonight. All right, with that, I think we are ready to move on into public comments. So at this time, I will draw everyone's attention to the board policy that talks about the rules of public participation. We'd like you to address the board, state your name, address, and limit your comments to three minutes. And as I mentioned, in August, what we'll do is we'll start with students first. If there are any students here, we would like to invite them up to the podium if they have any remarks to make. And oh, we do. Excellent.
I'm not a student, but I have to give context to what the student speaker is going to say. My name is Marty Atwater, 1750 Mount Route Drive Southeast. It was exciting to hear I'm going to start the meeting with lots of points of pride, and I'm here with student representatives simply to emphasize another point of pride. That would be the Forest Hills Robotics Team, and I'm just going to give context to the next public comment. The founding principle, one of the founding principles of the robotics team is gracious professionalism. Part of that means that kids involved in this program give back. They want to have an impact with their community, and this group has done that and is doing that this year, and they're going to tell you a little bit more about that. Just to give you a very general background, our robotics teams involve kids all the way through the district. Just a footnote, no, I have not changed horses. I'm very involved in OM Parent Meeting next Wednesday. But the robotics team, I've had the pleasure of serving on their board for several years, and wanted to, as a point of pride, emphasize, we have student representatives of the multiple students involved in this program all across the district. Our teams are individual teams, but they include kids from all parts, all three parts of the district. The Comets is the high school team, that's what we're here tonight, and they have a very established, successful track record. Mostly, we wanted to thank the district, because without the district's support and the support of our community partners, these kids would not have the opportunity to gain 21st century learning skills and to have the impact in their community and understand what it means to be a community partner. They are going to talk about, a little bit more about that outreach. More support is always needed, so if some of those dollars are there to help with after-school activities, certainly a cost of living increase would not be laughed at. We welcome any support the district can give and deeply appreciate that of our partners in the community as well. With that, I wanted, these student speakers, they want to have an opportunity to address the board. Thank you.
Thank you. If each of you could state your name when you make your comments, that would be great.
Cool. Hello, I'm Ben Gates, 264 Green Tree Lane.
Hi, I'm Ally Edwards, 4750 Catalpa Drive.
And I'm Simon Zwart, 2663 Pinesboro Drive Northeast.
And we are all members of Comets 3357, a high school robotics team that consists of students from all over the district. So along with building robots every year, we also build relationships with those in our community, like our recent partnership with local nonprofit organization Upcycle Bikes. Its mission is to obtain and repair used bikes to help those without transportation. Right now, the focus is getting refurbished bikes to refugee families who don't have a driver's license, let alone a vehicle.
Upcycle's mission dovetails beautifully with what we're doing in robotics. Understanding gears, levers, and other standard bicycle mechanics helps us develop the same skills for designing, fabricating, and programming our robot.
What we really need are bicycles to work on, so we're kicking off a bike drive. We need everyone's adult bikes regardless of condition, basically anything with 26-inch wheels or larger. So no children's bikes at this time. It can be, if they can be repaired, we'll help get it back on the road, and if it can't, which is fine, then we'll use it to create so-called Frankenbikes. Pretty much anything to help get bikes in the hands of adults who have no other source of transportation. We'll even pick up whatever you care to donate, so just contact us. Bike drive details will be coming out soon on how you can support this effort. Thank you for your time, and of course, once again, thank you for your continued support.
Thank you.
Can I, can I ask before you guys go, is there a best way to get ahold of the robotics team and you guys for people that have bikes or bike parts? Just through teachers or through the program?
Yes, most likely. Marty, do you want to? Yeah. Perfect.
As Banjo said, there are going to be details coming out, and they'll be at individual schools and hopefully on the district page as well with contact information. We will come pick up bikes or donations of any kind to support the effort.
Great, thanks.
All right, are there any other students this evening? Okay, any staff members? And then I'll give a second. It's a little bright. All right, if there are any community members that would like to address the board, now is the time.
My name is Doug Lee, 8613 50 Second Street, and I am running for candidate for school board here. I got a couple points today. One is I watched the video on the curriculum meeting this week, and I've seen this numerous times over last year. There seems to be always a blame that our kids are learning and their deficits are all because of COVID. But I'm looking at the particulars of the board and the superintendent, that is your COVID policies that you put in place that created these deficiencies, but yet you continuously use it as an excuse. So that's point one. Number two, I received an email from Valerie, Assistant Superintendent. I'd like to read that to you. "Thank you for your interest in serving on the Forest Hills Public School Board of Education. As we heard heading into this campaign season, I just wanted to remind you that the school board's district policy prohibits campaigning and distributing campaign materials for the reference of a candidate or ballot questions on school property. I think that you need to consult your attorneys. This is a First Amendment violation, so you obviously have access to attorneys. Why don't you bring this question to them, because this is a violation of law. And as you figured out by now, after fifteen months of being up here, we're not backing down. We will replace this board. Thank you."
May I approach the board for a handout, please?
You can hand it to Val, please. Thank you.
My name is Nick Prill, and tonight I am here on behalf of Attorney Darren Wisely to deliver the letter that you guys are getting a copy of right now and to read it into public record. Today's date, September 19th, 2022. Valerie Clements, Executive Assistant to the Superintendent, Forest Hills Public School Board of Education, 6590 Cascade Road Southeast, Grand Rapids, Michigan 49546. C.C. Dan Beam, Superintendent. Recampaigning on District Property. Ms. Clements, I am contacting you on behalf of Doug Lee, 2022 Board of Education Candidate, regarding an email you sent on September 15th, 2022, stating, "I just wanted to remind you that school district policy prohibits campaigning and distributing campaign materials that reference a candidate or ballot question on school property. I'm not sure where you received this legal advice from, but this policy is wildly unconstitutional. The stated policy designates a content-based restriction of speech or expression on district property. Subjecting your policy to strict scrutiny, the highest level of judicial review, as the U.S. Supreme Court has addressed the burden on you to prove that the restrictive, restriction furthers a compelling interest and is narrowly tailored to achieve that interest with the laws, or with the case cited. Please do the following to resolve this matter. One, rescind the unconstitutional violation of the freedom of speech and expression as protected by the First and Fourteenth Amendments of the U.S. Constitution. And two, send out a remedial email to the district stating that there is not a ban on campaigning nor distributing campaign materials on district property. It should also be brought to your attention that your policy is in violation of a clearly established federal right which could subject you to personal capacity liability, including punitive damages and attorney fees pursuant to Section 42 of the U.S. Code, subsection 1988B. Thank you for your time and attention to this important matter. It's my hope that it can be resolved without issue. Should you have any questions or concerns, please do not hesitate to contact my office via the information provided on the above letterhead. Very truly yours, Darren A. Wisely." Thank you.
My name is Stephanie Boone. I live at 2205 Knoll Point Drive, and I am enjoying standing here in the high school that I graduated from. And I see a lot of the bones of the school that I once went to. Even Coach Sukup coached my husband in football and myself in track. I sang in Northern Singers up here on this stage. And it makes me sad to see that the direction our district is headed and the things that we used to stand for are no longer there. And I know that school board elections are traditionally nonpartisan, but it's a matter of public record to know that at least half of you up there have voted in at least the last three general elections as Republicans. And when we look at what the Republican Party says about education, I'm confused, because it says on the White House Directive on the transgender student rights, for example, that requires schools to allow transgender students to use the restroom or locker room that matches their gender identity, they're asking, the Republicans are asking the party to deem it illegal and dangerous. It ignores privacy issues. It ignores privacy issues, and the Republican Party salutes the several states that have filed suit against it. So why are we standing for that in this district? On student loans, the Republican Party calls for the ending of the Federal Direct Student Loan Program and the Student Loan Forgiveness Program. On student political activism, the Republican Party criticizes zones of intellectual intolerance or safe zones, where marginalized students feel comfortable discussing sensitive issues. And I walk through those doors and I see the GLI library and rainbows and pride for the LGBTQ community. And that is not what our school should be about. Our school should be about education and academics and be a welcoming space for everyone. And I just wish and I pray and I hope that you all who sit up here and vote as Republicans would stop and think about that and stand for what you know is right for our children and for the future of America. It makes me really, really sad that the principal had to apologize that it was American Day and that students had American clothing on in that video that we watched. Why would we be apologizing for that? We should be proud of that. Think about that. I also think that, you know, you've got this parent advisory committee that you're proud to say you've met with the parents. What about this parent advisory committee? We've been here all along. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Mike Loyks, and I live at 639 Altadale. My wife and I, Melissa, have four kids, three of them still in the school district. And one of the things that is important to us is medical freedom, and we believe that's also important with, with the staff and others in the district. And you might say, what's that have to do with the Board of Education? Well, quite a bit. Obviously, the last two years, the kids and staff had to deal with mask restrictions, contact tracing, and pressures to vaccinate for COVID in order to participate in the school system. These are very clear interventions that are medical-related. But today, I invite each candidate that's running for, for the Board of Education to complete an online survey hosted by the Michigan Health Choice Alliance, MIHealthChoice.org. And this is right from their website. Quote, "Michigan Health Choice Alliance is dedicated to protecting freedom. We do this by ensuring the value of health choice so it remains at the forefront of political discourse, drafting informed choice and health choice legislation, promoting both candidates and incumbents who strongly support our values." I'll read you just a little bit about this, so it's a two-page, it's super simple. This is the cover letter. I won't go through all of it, but I'll just mention a couple of details out of it. One of the things that states in the cover letter that's, that's listed, "To dear 2022 primary candidate for local school board, we believe firmly the fundamental rights of parents to direct the care and upbringing of their own children, and this is supported by state law MCL 38010." Okay, just for a moment, I'll mention, it's seven questions, it's literally one page. And at the very top, again, it, it says here, "Your answers to this survey are reported to your constituents in your district. To keep in mind, you were voted into these roles." And really, what's great about this, and I think you've heard me talk about medical freedom and medical choice, this is transparency. So I think the opportunity here is very exciting. So CJ, Suzanne, and I'd say it to Mary if she was here. I have physical copies I can give to you tonight. But I will also email this link to all 13 candidates. So you have, each of you have the opportunity to show your constituents transparently that you support medical freedom. You can make a difference. You can actually make a difference with this. There's a lot of people that have already done this, it's on their website. I recommend you take this survey in the next few weeks. Really, that'll help people see where you stand on medical freedom. I have also little flyers here with QR codes if anyone wants to see the information. Thank you.
Thank you. If you want to just give it to Val, then she could distribute it. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Dave Haynes. I live at 2391 Grand Valley Drive in Ada. Lived in Forest Hills for 30 years. I have two sons. They both graduated from this high school. My oldest is an original Spanish immersion kid, and he did fantastic. Very proud of him. My youngest, I'm very proud of too. They both played hockey and golf. So they were, they did all the extracurricular activities. Love the school system. I have a nephew who attended Goodwilly. To me, that is the happiest place on earth, Goodwilly School. Lastly, I worked with a lot of the schools. I did school fundraising, I worked with administrators, I worked with staff. So frankly, all of my experiences in the Forest Hills district were awesome. Loved them. Didn't have a second thought about Forest Hills Public Schools being left in good hands. They graduated 10 and seven years ago. And I also heard the coaches tonight talk with pride about promoting Forest Hills, how wonderful the schools are. In late 20, I'm a curious 60-year-old man. I started hearing about the three-letter things, programs that we all know about, the DEI, the CRT, and the SEL. So I went to my first board meeting to check it out, and that happened to be at the Performing Arts Center. It was contentious, it was sad, it made me feel bad for students, parents, and staff, everybody that I knew. There was no, nothing that was tremendously positive about that board meeting. I've gone to seven or eight more since then, and we've got an election coming up. I've done my research, I have my thoughts. I have wished desperately to stay apolitical. It's hard to do. There's a lot of animosity in this district, and it comes from both sides. So it's really hard to do. I have an action plan, my own action item. I implore everyone in here to do their research. Don't just go in blindly and vote for a board member. Do your research. Look into social and emotional learning and how it's implemented in the system. Is it affecting academics in a positive way? Do the research. Study up on it. Know about the budget. Know about the objectionable books. Know how decisions are made between the board and the superintendent. Do your studying, do your due diligence. It's critically important. Be informed when you vote. My kids have graduated, but I pay taxes. Most importantly, I still care about this school system a lot and the students. So I implore people to do their work before they vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jarrett Jacobowski. I live at 19 White Hills, and we've been in the district for well over 30 years. As a joke punchline goes, "We can't go on meeting like this." And we are here to say, not joking, we really cannot go on meeting like this. Changes to a reformation of our public schools right here, right now, and nationwide are an existential must-do. Here, we have outrageous lack of budgetary transparency, raising suspicions of, well, you fill in the blanks, blatant ongoing violations of open meeting laws, abysmal mismanagement of busing via an all-too-remote mismanager, declining ratings of our statewide rankings, dumping valedictorian and salutatorian awards are but one symptom of the erosion of academic and scholastic emphasis. Kids from other districts need to be imported to pump up falling enrollment and maintain government revenue. Age inappropriate bilge in our libraries and on the secreted stash shelves of woke teachers. And in my own neighborhood, I see the sick outcome of the critical race nonsense being force-fed students. I repeat this yet again. It needs to sink in. Mixed-race kids attack their white parents, grandparents, and other kids by accusing them of being racist. They say they learned that from their teachers at school, specifically northern. And I know of a girl student at Central who had a gay activist teacher who lured her and other insecure girls who felt different into a virtual girl-on-girl Goth-like coven. She was told, "Your parents don't understand you, we do. They don't really love you, we do." Upon graduation, that girl shaved her head, got tattooed, and grotesquely mutilated with piercings, and ran off to be with her community, her real family on the left coast. Thanks, in no small part, to the social-emotional counseling at Central, that girl was lost to her parents. No need to fact-check, because that impressionable girl was my daughter. That was 20 years ago. And you can bet the demented, woke, divisive malignancy has metastasized over the last couple decades. After many years of prayer, perseverance, and reaching out, our daughter finally came back to the light and family. Her piercings and other scars are healing. She now has a loving husband, a daughter, and I have a granddaughter. So your woke teachers will be disappointed to learn you lost one of your recruits. As I said, we cannot go on meeting like this. And as God is my witness, after November, board meetings will not be like this, because we will finally have a board dedicated to the way, truth, and light that has been lacking here for far, far too long. To be continued.
Hi there. Hi, I'm Scott Van Solkma. I live at 2570 Orange Court. I want to piggyback regarding the finances. I've been asking for, I don't know how many times I've come to board meetings regarding how local municipalities do it. You guys authorized $12.5 million today, and with no real detail. Just for instance, since September 2020 till July 20, July 2022, you've authorized $300,000 for architectural fees for the new administration building. I saw that they just now broke ground the other day with the sidewalks being torn up. Where the municipalities, they put everything in their board packets. Sometimes they're 300 pages long or 600 pages. But your online board packets are so messed up that you got to click on every hyperlink. And I know, I believe it's VP Covell, you talked about on your campaign thing about adding substance to your, to the board packets. I don't know if it was you or Ms. Fawson, I don't remember exactly. I know one of you did. And nothing's really changed from them. As opposed to clicking on every single link, it would just be more user-friendly for us, the public. And I don't know how you guys get your board meeting information, if you guys even read it. Hopefully you do. I mean, but there was 10 different items here today, and I showed up an hour late thinking I'd at least hear something or talk about it. But I walked in, and there's public comments. So I'm sorry I missed, missed everything, but I had things going on today. The other thing is, I went to FOIA the finances, which I had gotten for free on two prior times, and I was able to finagle this time. But they wanted to charge me $212 for four hours of work to get FOIA records of finances, which I believe should be public information. Thankfully, I did get it for free eventually. I was able to get some stuff that didn't need to be redacted. But even still, it should be out there for all of us. It's, it's public record. Now granted, I understand that you guys are also volunteers, right? I have no problem with, with board members actually getting paid, because there is that old adage, "You get what you pay for." And if someone's doing something for free, they may not do well. I don't know, like I said, I don't know how many board meetings I've been to, both the finance and curriculum and these. And I never really hear any discussion, no real, I, I don't know if you guys have ever voted no on anything. And I'm not saying you need to vote no just to vote no, but there should be some back and forth. You know, again, going back to the municipalities, a lot of those board members vote no on things. And they don't just rubber stamp yes on everything. So I do hope that there is some turnover come November and that people will have some disagreements and discord. I mean, again, there was 10 items on the, on the page, and some of them were, you know, just presentations from the schools. You know, students. And I should be here, there should be just discourse and, and content. Also, one more thing, if there's any way to have any type of public debate at the Fine Arts Center, which the school owns, that'd be great and beneficial for the community versus just some random parent organization that organized something this coming Wednesday. Thank you.
I'm going to be reading from Flying Lessons and Other Stories by Somen Chinani, edited by Ellen O. Page 135. That passage sets up the character as a minor. Page 137. Yes, on page 139. This story was read in its entirety by the eighth-grade English teacher at Central Middle School on the first week of school. That teacher then asked the students to discuss if the story made them feel uncomfortable and why. Still worse, this book can also be found in Northern High, Central Middle, Central Woodlands, Collins Elementary, Pine Ridge Elementary, and Orchard View Elementary Libraries. Children as young as five years old can check out this book without parental guidance or knowledge. Having these books in a school library is an error of omission. Actively using these books in a class just to make students uncomfortable and then force them to discuss is an error of commission. Like it or not, schools do impart values on children. Should FHPS be normalizing abandoning minors on nude beaches or taking them to adult-only shows? Are these really FHPS values? Children are not the same as adults, and school libraries are not the same as public libraries. Books present at a school should be carefully selected to complement parental as well as societal values. This shapes good citizens. Unlike public libraries, not every book belongs in a school library. There is a very small but noisy fringe group of extremists for whom no corruption is taboo. They do not care if the innocence of our children are assaulted and stripped away, in this case, directly by a teacher. Some are even running for school board positions. There are others running who oppose this attack on our children. And I'm sure that this board feels caught in between. But to not act sends us a message, unintentional or not, on FHPS values. The book review process is unused because it lacks reproducibility and standardization. I am told that this is in the process of being corrected. Until then, though, you're not powerless. The Board Policy 5407 B4 and C2 clearly states that the book review committee is consultative only. The final decision belongs to the Board of Education Curriculum Committee. This means you have the final say. You don't have to wait. You can send parents a clear message on FHPS values by acting on the information I've just presented to you or send another message by doing nothing. This choice is ultimately yours. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Ed Abufadel. I live at 6364 Scarborough Drive in Ada. My wife and I live in the district. Our son graduated from Forest Hills Central in 2017. I want to talk about a new topic with the board. Last week, I read a new report, Greater Grand Rapids Tech Strategy, from The Right Place. I recommend the report for all board members, as well as candidates for the board, such as myself. The Right Place is a public-private regional economic development organization, and this new report describes a plan for the region to become a major tech hub in the Midwest. We're talking about joining cities like Denver, Nashville, and Salt Lake City, all which have vibrant economies due to becoming tech hubs. Some key points. In Greater Grand Rapids, the tech sector would grow from 6% of the jobs currently to 10% in the region. This means 20,000 new jobs. These are not just computer coding jobs. They would also be project managers, mechanics for robotics, we had robotics students earlier, and machines, data scientists, cybersecurity specialists, marketing specialists, and risk management specialists. Now, what does this have to do with the Forest Hills School District? Well, Slide 22 in the report has the following. To reach our goal of adding 20,000 tech jobs in Greater Grand Rapids, we must launch a multi-pronged strategy, beginning by increasing exposure to tech skills and careers through the K-12 system. Included in the report are examples of increasing exposure from the Kentwood and Oakland public schools. One of the tactics in the report, quote, "Creating age-relevant exploration opportunities and technology careers for elementary, middle, and high school levels, so all students are exposed to real-world opportunities in tech," unquote. This is coming to the region. I know that at Grand Valley State, where I work, we were already talking about how we will fit into this plan. How will Forest Hills be part of this plan? How are we preparing our kids to get their share of these jobs after high school or after college? The plan also involves recruiting tech specialists from other parts of the country. Will the district and its culture be seen to them as an attractive place to live? I think this would be a great topic for further discussion, particularly as you work on strategic planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening? All right. Thank you. Well, for those of you that this is your first board meeting, which I don't think it is for many of the people who are here, we all took notes on these. If there are specific action items that Superintendent Beam and his team needs to look into, they will. And then these are all great discussion topics for us to reflect on going forward. So with that, if there's no other business, I think we are looking for a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn this regular meeting of the Board of Education.
And do we have a second?
Second.
All right. We are adjourned.